Good evening. The June 28, 2018 Longview City Council meetings now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by DeKaelin Taylor, a youth member at First Baptist Church. Please rise.
I'm going to start with a prayer. Can everybody bow their heads? Lord, I thank you for this day. I thank you for bringing us all here to be together. And I ask that you help the council in whatever they're going through. And I thank you for letting us all be here. And I ask you to lead us to the future and have future generations to still make Longview a great place. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
DeKaelin, thank you very much, sir. It's often nice when young people pray for us old people. It makes us feel really good.[94.04][94.04](laughter) And I'm including all y'all in that old people thing. Tonight in employee recognition, we're going to recognize the aquatics division. The Longview Parks Recreation Department Aquatics Division operates and maintains two outdoor pools, Ingram and Longview Swim Center, as well as five splash pads, Jackman, Broughton, Stamper, Spring Hill and Rotary. Each year, over 14,000 people visit the outdoor pools and many more splashes around one of the splash pads. In order to keep all our residents safe in and around water, the city employs 41 part-time and seasonal lifeguards. Each one of these lifeguards must complete a 30-hour lifeguard training class, which includes first aid and CPR. In addition, 24 hours of in-service training is conducted throughout the summer to improve and maintain their skills. Annually, eight lifeguard certification classes are offered to the public by City of Longview staff, leading to nearly 100 lifeguards supervising pools in East Texas. Learn to Swim is the largest program offered by the Parks and Rec Department. Through the four full seasons and two mini sessions during the summer, a total of 206 classes are offered, and this year will reach over 1,000 participants. Four more special events will be held this summer. The Itty Bitty Beach Party, July 14th, Learn to Swim Competition Meet, July 28th, Dive in Movie, August 4th, and Dog Days of Summer, August 18th. All this work is coordinated by Seth Pyle, Recreation Manager, Lee Ward, Recreation Supervisor, Tanner Rhodes, Aquatics Coordinator, Scott Parrish, Reservation and Building Coordinator, and Barbara Fitz, Senior Recreation Assistant. Please come forward.[185.37][185.37](applause)
You stand way over there.
People talk down.[189.12][189.12](laughter) Golly, where do y'all grow these people?
He's from the next step.
Is he? Yeah, no kidding. Look at that. Okay, you know, I don't know how many of y'all have visited our pools, but I did yesterday, as a matter of fact. I went to Ingram Pool yesterday just to see what it was like. Because when I was a kid, I grew up swimming in Ingram Pool, up 10th Street Hill. We'd walk up the big hill. That hill was a lot bigger when I was a kid than it is now. It doesn't seem as big anymore. But, you know, I saw the kids out there swimming and playing, and I thought, wow, what a great thing that they can come out and enjoy our facilities. And because of that, you bring kids the ability to do something in the summer that they may not have a chance to do. And that takes a lot of work, effort. The programs y'all are putting on are phenomenal. You help kids have something to do besides something that they shouldn't be doing. And that's a big thing for kids that are out of school in the summertime. So, you know, I appreciate the effort y'all put out there. I know the citizens appreciate it. I know those kids appreciate it even more. So, thanks for what you do. Y'all do a great job, all the coordination, all the effort, all the things that you do do not go unnoticed. So, thank you very much. Y'all are awesome. Way to go. Keep up the good work.[253.34][253.34](applause) Thank you all. Y'all are awesome. that a lot of y'all may not know all that she does. And she has no idea why she's here tonight. But I'm going to recognize Ms. Vicki Clark Stover. Vicki's name is synonymous with flowers. As owner of Casa Flores, she brings cheer, joy, and comfort to many through her work. In addition to that, she donates her time and talents to many nonprofits in Longview. Junior Achievement, East Texas Alzheimer's Alliance, and the Go-Giver Gala are just a few worth mentioning. Last fall, Vicki orchestrated an amazing event called Pedal It Forward, in which Casa Flores distributed thousands of flowers around Longview to unsuspecting residents in an effort to spread happiness and cheer. That's the kind of person that Vicki is. She is a true, true go-giver. Vicki, please come forward.[343.46][343.46](applause) She thought she was going to be here to talk about her award with her Alzheimer's yield, and that's not what you're here for, honey. You're here to get recognized. Because this lady is so special. I haven't, I can't tell you how many years I've known her, because it would make me really old.[365.59][365.59](laughter) But I've known her since, well, a long time. She does so much for our community, and she does it with this wonderful, beautiful, happy smile, this heart that never says no to anything or anybody. And that's the kind of person we want in Longview. That's the kind of person I want as my friend, and she's been my friend for a long time. And I can tell you this, I had a birthday last month, or this month, yeah, it seemed like a year ago. And I received flowers for my birthday, and it was from this wonderful lady. And I was so surprised. I don't receive flowers very often, more like things that aren't flowers. But it was so nice and refreshing to know that you remembered me and that you remember all the things that make Longview so good. You're just a wonderful human being, and I'm so proud to have you as a friend. Thank you so much.[408.58][408.58](applause)
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Appreciate it.
Renata, citizen comment. I had no speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak and fill out a card later? Very well. Public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Bonds. Thank you for allowing me to give you an update. This past week, we completed another women's safety course. We had 20, about 32 women that registered for this course. As I've mentioned before, this is by far our most popular course and usually have a waiting list for participants in this course. But I want to thank everybody, all the women that came out and went through this course to learn better ways on how they can help protect theirselves and their families. And with that, we'll be having another women's safety course and taking registration for that course now. That will be September 24th through the 29th. And for more information, they can contact Officer Christie Bryan, or they can go to longviewtexas.gov/womensafety for a registration form to participate in that women's safety course. One thing about this course here is we actually teach firearm safety, and we have a day at the range. We put them through our shooting simulator. And then on Saturday morning, we take a trip to our firing range and allow them to become familiar with weapons and learn safe handling practices for that. We're also now ready to accept applications for our Citizens Police Academy. This will be a six-week course that begins on September 6th. The course will meet on Tuesday and Thursday nights from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, anyone interested can go to longviewtexas.gov/CPA, fill out an application, and we'd love to have individuals come, learn more about our police department and how we operate. I'd like to give a shout-out to Water Burger on 4th Street. On the 23rd, they held a fundraiser for our Citizens on Patrol Group. We also kind of made it a public safety day for two hours that night. They donated 100% of their sales to our Citizens on Patrol Group, and our Citizens on Patrol were out there, officers were out there, and the fire department was there. And we were able to show off some of our equipment, and the Citizens on Patrol were able to do child identification cards to be able to give back to the parents. So, I want to thank Water Burger for their generosity in inviting us out there to participate in their event. This last week, we also finished up our Police Explorer Camp. We had 23 students that went through that camp, gave us a great opportunity for some of our youth to interact with the officers, learn more about police work, and hopefully encourage them to join our Explorer program and get further in-depth information on the police department. And hopefully, we'd be able to use our Explorer program as a recruiting tool for future officers as we have done in the past. I'd also like to take a minute, in light of the tragic event that we had occurred a couple of weeks ago, and talk a little bit about firearm safety in the home, just some basic common safety tips, storing guns in a lock location unloaded, storing ammunition in a separate lock location. When a gun is not in its lock box, we're asking you to keep it in your line of sight. And also to make sure that all guns are equipped with effective child safety-resistant locks. We have had a longstanding relationship with Project Child Safe, and we have free gun locks that we will give to any citizen that doesn't have a means to secure weapons in the home. These are free. They can stop by the police department, pick one up, or you can call Officer Christie Bryan, or email her at christiebryan@longviewtexas.gov. If somebody can't get by to pick it up, if you'll send us an email, we'll deliver it to you. Couple months ago, couple weeks ago, I highlighted a program that we've come up with called Outside the Badge, to kind of highlight an officer and some of the things that the officers do outside of police work. This month, we're going to highlight Officer Benny Cooks. Benny is a 10-year veteran of the police department. And, well, I'll let you watch the video, and then I'll say some more about it.
Come on in. Come on in. Just being out here, to me, it just seems like a freedom, just you can't get anywhere else into city life. Takes my mind off what goes on during the normal day. See, I grew up south side of Longview with a pretty good side family. Broden Park, we'd go there and play basketball quite a bit. It's changed a lot since then, but that was one of the main hangout spots for us growing up. We'd go there and shoot, mainly shoot basketball. Never was any good, but I was there. I really thought my world would be into the mechanic. My dad was a mechanic. Matter of fact, that's how I met Chief Bishop, was working on cars and changing oils. Kind of was like the police thing. And so, I tried it. I filled out the application, and they hired me. Oh, what did they do? One of the few FTOs we got, and I get to watch the younger generation. And I'm able to pass it along to the younger guys, that just being the police, I mean, you have to be big bad, you know, you can talk to people. Somebody's got to protect us, so why not be the one to do it? I actually patrol the area where I grew up, and I can see the changes in it, but everybody still know me as Mr. Benny. That makes me feel pretty good, you know, that I can actually be a difference, be a kind of a role model. I don't call myself a role model. Never thought I'd be a role model.
Stay out of trouble, you can do anything you want.
If it makes you happy to do it, if you don't, you're not happy doing it, why waste your time? Go find something that do make you happy, as long as it's legal.[825.51][825.51](laughter) At the end, if not, you have to look for me.[829.13][829.13](laughter) My name is Benny Cooks. I'm a proud, lifelong resident of Longview, and I am honored to serve our community as a Longview police officer.[838.13][838.13](applause)
Benny was a mechanic before he worked for the police department, and he used to work at one of the oil change places where we took our cars. And every time we went in there, Benny would always ask about, what do I need to do to become a police officer? He kept asking that question. I says, when you going to fill out an application? So, 10 years later, he's doing a great job. Any questions?
Any questions, Chief Bishop?
Great job on the video, Chief. Thank you. Great job on Mr. Benny. It's wonderful when we have people in our community like that, that, you know, he is a role model, and he's a police officer at the same time. That means a lot. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief Stealman.[880.13][880.13](applause)
Mayor Matt, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thank you for the opportunity to update you since we last met. First thing I'd like to talk about tonight is we were fortunate this past weekend to have hosted the first of two summer hot camps. This one was targeted to our junior hot campers. We actually had nine participants that came out and spent the day at the fire training center, learning important lifesaving skills, skills like CPR, first aid. They got to interact with some of our crews. They were doing an example of a water rescue and messing around with some ropes off of a ladder truck, and just learn what the day-in, day-out life of being a firefighter or a paramedic is all about. So, hopefully, these are young kids in our community that will eventually look to this as a career opportunity for them. We're hosting the second of these hot camps, actually on July 21st. This one is our, we call it our senior hot camp. It's targeted at high school age students. We actually had two spots left in that. And if anybody's interested in participating, they go to longviewtexas.gov/hotcamp and get themselves registered. And we look forward to hosting that next camp. We also had the opportunity to do the first of two summer safety days at, this one was actually held at the Longview Swim Center on Fairmont Street. And this is a collaboration between the Fire Department, Police Department, and Parks Department. To where we go out and we spend a couple of hours at the pool, talking about water safety, talking about hot car safety. If you recall the last council meeting, I showed you some statistics from around the state of where Texas falls with drownings and with hot car fatalities. So, it's certainly, and unfortunately, we have experienced those here in our community over certain periods of time, that it's an important thing to get out in the community and just educate people and talk to them about how dangerous, I mean, you see the temperature in the car there. It's a 97-degree day outside, but inside that car, it's 138. So, that will just drain the life right out of you pretty quick. And there's our water rescue guys in the pool with some kids, talking about water and boating safety. So, just a great day to be out interacting. Our next one of these is scheduled for this Saturday. We'll actually hold this one at Ingram Pool. So, this is a new thing for us. We're stepping outside and not just doing Longview Swim Center, but now we're going to do both pools and really focus on spreading that out in the community. So, we're looking forward to that next opportunity at Ingram. And I'll echo Chief Bishop's sentiment of Water Burger. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to come out and interact, not only with the Water Burger staff, but with the public in general. And I spend some time demonstrating some of our equipment, and, you know, again, educating people on who we are, what we do, and why we do the things that, you know, a lot of times, people ask questions about. So, a big thanks to Water Burger for including us in that public safety night. This is one that comes around every once in a while. The State of Texas reached out to us earlier this week. They needed some help down in Cameron County. And if you're looking on the map, that's about as far south in Texas as you can go and still stay in Texas. They spun up one of our team members, Clay Kitchens, who's a member of the Texas Emergency Management Assistance Team. If you've watched the weather here lately, you know they've got some severe flooding going on down there. And they mobilized Clay as part of a team from across the state to go in and do damage assessment, to help them figure out quickly how bad is bad and how bad are they hurt, so that they can begin that recovery process much faster. So, we're certainly pleased to be able to help out with that, and it just goes to the degree of professionalism that our employees have when the State of Texas reaches out and says, hey, we need your help. So, we're certainly glad to be a part of that process. And talking about heat, if you're paying attention, it's getting hot outside, and it's just going to continue to do so. So, we certainly want our citizens to be aware of the signs of heat exhaustion and heat stroke. While heat exhaustion is a severe emergency, a lot of times, people can take care of that on their own, if they get themselves and remove themselves from that environment and get some fluids going, staying hydrated. And heat stroke is more of a life-threatening event, and we certainly don't want people to, if they have any question between which one of the two may be going on, call 911 and let us come there and help you out with that. So, certainly pay attention to one another, stay hydrated, and do the best you can to avoid that summer heat as much as possible. And I'll do my usual picture of Code Red. We do have the Code Red notification system that our residents can sign up for. It's a free, a free offer that the city does to get emergency notifications sooner rather than later, and know in times of crisis what may be coming upon the city. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, one good question. What are the age limitations of the programs that you're offering for the kids?
So, the junior hot camp, and I should have been more prepared for this, I think it's like fourth grade through junior high.
Okay.
The senior hot camp are people that are going to be entering ninth grade to the 12th grade.
So, I'm too old for what you're saying.
Yes, sorry.[1138.63][1138.63](laughter) I know you honed in on the senior hot camp part, but it's not that type of senior.
I'm thinking, you know? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you both for what you do. Appreciate you very much. Renata, consent agenda. Item A has been removed from this agenda, so would any council member like any other item out for separate discussion?
No, do you approve?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And while we're on this, I just wanted to take a moment to say, welcome to Judge Brabham and our council chairs tonight. Nice to have you here, Judge. It's always an honor to have you in our chambers. Thank you for being here. And also, Mr. David Willard, our previous city manager in the audience today. We appreciate you being here as well, David. And his wife Cindy. Nice to see you all. Thank you.[1182.73][1182.73](applause) Renata, items of community interest. Mr. Moore.
I'd just like to remind everybody, we are hosting another workshop for historical markers and how to go about getting one. It's on Saturday, July 14th, 10:00 a.m., at the Community Development Building on South High, and I would encourage people to attend, given that we are trying to preserve as many historical facilities in our community as possible, especially coming up with our sesquicentennial in 2020.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you, sir. Ms. Snoddy.
I have nothing.
Mr. Wade.
I'll pass this open.
Mrs. Shihara. Mr. Wright.
Just scheduled for July 24th, a town hall meeting to discuss the potential bond election. It will be at the Spring Hill High School Library.
Very good. Mr. Pertle.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Bonds. Wow, y'all are easy to know. Okay. Well, the City of Longview offices will be closed for Independence Day on Wednesday, July 4th. The trash recycling schedule will not be changed by the holiday, of course. The annual fireworks and freedom celebration will take place at Maud Cobb Convention Center on Wednesday, July 4th, and will feature a free concert with the Ray Johnson Band, followed by Sammy Kershaw. The festivities open at 11:00, and the all-day activities will be talked off of the spectacular fireworks display that starts at 9:30. Festival admission, parking, and the fireworks show are free to the public. To learn more, please visit longviewtexas.gov/fireworks. Before I continue, I'm going to stop and say, if you haven't been to that, you must go. It is phenomenal. We're going to talk about that in our little survey in just a minute. City staff does a phenomenal job of putting this on, and there are so many events for all parts of the family. You'll see your friends and neighbors out there, and you will have a blast, and you will be blown away at the fireworks display. Every year, I say the same thing, how does it get better? And it's better and better every year. It's at least 30 full minutes of fireworks that are just, it's phenomenal. So, go ahead and enjoy that. And it's free. There are several upcoming events throughout Longview community. Greck County Historical Society's fundraiser, Dolly's Tea Room, will take place Saturday, June 30th at the museum. Don't forget to wear your best hat and gloves. Space is limited, so call the museum and reserve your spot today. Come celebrate America's war heroes at Preservation Longview's event, The Greatest War Letters Ever Written, featuring New York Times bestselling author Andrew Carroll. This special event takes place at First United Methodist Church on Thursday, July 5th. Stars Entertainment presents Summer Comedy Jam, featuring queen of comedy Samor at Maud Cobb on Saturday, July 7th. Also performed comedian-celebrity Redbone, Tony Scofield, and Toure. So, make plans to have your funny bone tickled. You'd have your funny bone tickled, listen to me pronounce those names. Where'd that come from? For more information on any of these events, please check out the calendar at visit longviewtexas.com, or for city events, visit longviewtexas.gov/calender. Those are some neat things coming up. So, you know, you've got a lot of choices on what you want to do, so don't be bored. Get out and enjoy what we're offering here in the City of Longview. Survey time. With the recent Supreme Court ruling allowing states to collect sales tax from online sales, do you think the cities should be able to capitalize on this as well? I'm totally shocked by this response. I would bet it was going to be 100% to zero. Why would we not want to get our city's sales tax if someone's shopping online? Only 56% said yes. 44%, they must not answer the question. 44% said, no, they don't want the sales tax revenue from online shopping that costs us nothing, and we get the sales tax for free. I'm blown away with that one. I missed that one. I thought it'd be 100 to zero. I asked a question I thought was one of those lob up, hit it over the fence? No, I'm blown away. But I hope that our representatives and our senators will lobby our state to allow that sales tax to trickle down to the cities where those individuals are buying those goods, because that's the only way it does us any good. The state will continue to collect their sales tax as they always do. We should get our portion of that revenue to be able to put into our city budget, because we're losing that money when someone buys online and doesn't buy locally. So, I'm going to push and encourage our legislators and our governor to allow that to come into the cities as well, because otherwise, it will not benefit us in the same manner. And I hope to see that benefit us, because I think that's a historic decision to allow that to happen, because we lose, I think it's, the state's going to receive something like 1 point something billion dollars in revenues from the sales taxes that we don't receive now, because we don't collect it from, you know, our state. So, that could be huge for our city and for our, it will be huge for our state, but it should be huge for our city, too. So, I hope that that will, we will see progress on that. That's why I asked that question, is I wanted to be able to emphasize how important it would be for us to be able to capitalize on that and not just the State of Texas. So, there we go. There's my two cents. Okay. Do you have plans to attend the city's Fourth of July celebration next week? Here I am again. 60% said no. What are y'all going to do?[1438.13][1438.13](laughter) Where are you going? Go to Maud Cobb and go to our Fourth of July celebration. It's a wonderful event. It's a lot of fun. So, I expect to see you all out there. Every one of y'all, I got you on camera here. I want to see every one of y'all out there. If you've got something better to do, we haven't been invited to something better. Have you all been invited to something better? No, that's where we're going. Okay. See y'all out there. Right? Okay. Hey, before we dismiss, I want to just say thank you for everybody with their casual attire tonight. I know it's a little bit different, but it's nice that we're able to come in here and not have to wear coat and tie at this point in time, because it is hot outside, and it's nice to have this break. So, thank you all for complying, and hopefully, we don't get a lot of flak from the community, because I think they'll understand the purpose behind it. We will now retire to executive session to discuss personal matters under Government Code Section 551.074, to discuss liberating employment duties of the city manager. We will reconvene in public session for actionally above item once this discussion is ended. So, we will now adjourn to executive session. to happen, because we lose, I think it's, the state's going to receive something like 1. something billion dollars in revenues from the sales taxes that we don't receive now, because we don't collect it from, you know, our state. So that could be huge for our city and for our, it will be huge for our state, but it should be huge for our city, too. So I hope that that will, we will see progress on that. That's why I asked that question, is I wanted to be able to emphasize how important it would be for us to be able to capitalize on that and not just the State of Texas. So there we go. That's my two cents. Okay. Do you have plans to attend the city's Fourth of July celebration next week? Here I am again. 60% said no. What are y'all going to do? Where are you going? Go to Mod Cobb and go to our Fourth of July celebration. It's a wonderful event. It's a lot of fun. So I expect to see y'all out there. Every one of y'all, I got you on camera here. I want to see every one of y'all out there. If you got something better to do. We haven't been invited to something better. Have you all been invited to something better? No. That's where we're going. Okay. See y'all out there. Right? Okay. Hey, before we dismiss, I want to just say thank you for everybody with their casual attire tonight. I know it's a little bit different, but it's nice that we're able to come in here and not have to wear a coat and tie at this point in time, because it is hot outside, and it's nice to have this break. So thank you all for complying, and hopefully, we don't get a lot of flack from the community, because I think they'll understand the purpose behind it. We will now retire into executive session to discuss personal matters under Government Code Section 551.074, discuss and liberate employment duties of the city manager. We will reconvene in public session for actionally above item once this discussion is ended. So we will now adjourn to executive session. After executive session, after having discussed the employment duties and appointments of our acting city manager, we have come to the conclusion that we would like to make Mr. Bonds our permanent city manager. So I need a motion.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Bonds. And with that, we are officially adjourned. Thank you all for attending.